Good. Smithville Board of Aldermen Meeting is now called to order. Please stand and join me in the pledge.
The pledge leaders, identifying the United States of America.
First item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Alderman Atkins.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Mayor, I'll second.
Any discussion? All who are in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next item, number four, Planning and Zoning Report.
Thank you, Mayor. Jack shared that for the budget year of 2025, we've had eighty-two building permits, and of those, fifteen have been since the beginning of this year. There's a lot of construction happening all around town. And then there was a presentation of the one sixty-nine South Employment Overlay District, and then the Board of Aldermen was presented that at the work session we just had. Item eleven on tonight's agenda for rezoning of River Place was on our agenda. And then there were two items that were pulled from the planning and zoning, which was the public hearing and preliminary plat for the River Place subdivision. We know it's postponed till a future meeting because they were waiting for MoDOT to have time to weigh in on the traffic study. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Any questions for Alderman Wilson? Next item is the City Ministers' Report. Oh, oh, sorry. You did forget Parks. We did have a Parks Board, too. Leah?
You're gonna make me talk on it now if you didn't put it on the agenda? We discussed a few different things at Parks this week, but we, um, we just started the discussion of renaming the senior center. So we didn't come to any conclusions, but we began the process of that and then are in discussion with the seniors there as well. We wanted their input moving forward with naming that building. Matt, what was the other thing we majorly talked about? Oh, yeah, we also talked about kind of the design and direction of Smith Fork and what that looks like moving forward because our plan looks to move ballpark fields from Heritage out to Smith Fork. So just trying to get the design and guidance on what that's going to look like and what our city needs there.
Thank you. Any questions? No. City Ministers' Report, Ms. Wagner?
The report stands as provided. I do want to highlight a couple of future items. So long as the budget is approved tonight, we will post the information with regard to the change to employee retirement system. And that will be on your, uh, excuse me, on the agenda for action by you all on December sixteenth to be effective after the first of the year. And then we also will have on the November fourth board meeting, a services agreement with the firm of Williams and Campo for legal services. As noted in the report, a committee comprised of department directors and the mayor interviewed two firms that submitted proposals. And it was unanimous, we wanted to work with Williams and Campo. We're very excited. Their, their plan includes attendance at all governing body meetings, and they plan to attend all management team meetings on Wednesday mornings and have office hours on site for four hours every week. So we're very excited. We'll have additional information on that and are already starting on a list of things we want to work through, including signs, as we discussed earlier this evening. The Direction Finder Satisfaction Survey, it's delayed slightly. We hope to have those in mailboxes by the end of October. And the timing of the surveys has been delayed a bit. We do not anticipate that affecting when they will have analysis of those results. So after the first of the year, we'll start reviewing those, and then that helps us launch the strategic planning process if approved through the budget this evening. I also wanted to highlight, not included in the report, we received word today, or earlier this week, that Brandon Green, our plant operator at the water treatment plant, I'm sorry, water treatment plant manager, has received, he had certifications in Kansas. Those have now transferred over to Missouri, and he is officially on the books as our operator and chief plant operator. So that is very exciting news. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Chuck for some updates on public works projects across around town, particularly commercial.
I guess I have to hold the button. All right, we'll do this one. Oh, now I got two. Epic continues to make a lot of progress out there on one hundred and forty-fourth Street Pump Station in the Forest Main. They've laid over two thousand feet of Forest Main. They are almost up out of the hole that they've dug. There's some thirty feet up. They've done a lot of work in the last couple of weeks, as Rick will notice when I send him the pay app. It looks like they're going to start boring probably next week on one sixty-nine and ninety-two. So they're making a lot of progress. We're really happy with that. Probably the biggest item for everybody here is Commercial Avenue. On your agenda is the takeover agreement between the city and the surety. As you know, our previous contractor went default, went out of business, and the surety, the bonding company, has actually went and solicited new contractor bids. The bid is substantially more than the low bid that we received, but they will pick up all the difference. That's what the bond's for. They guarantee that we won't have to pay any more than what we had originally bid it for, other than any change orders that pop up that we have to do. We met today with the contractor at Selby Construction. They're out of Carney. We've got really good references from Mega, who did our streetscape project over here on Bridge Street. They've worked with Selby on a few projects and said they do a real good job. They've been very responsive. The MoDOT process is a little bit lengthy with the FHWA, the Federal Highway Funds that we have for the project. So they're looking at starting probably next Monday. They stuck, the school district attended as well. We're probably going to start trying to fill in those gaps by the school and what our previous contractor left open, get that retaining wall done, and then continue on with it. It's a sixty-eight calendar day project. Weather at this point probably will become a factor, but they plan to get as much done as they possibly can while the weather's good. You know, sometimes we can go all the way into January with good weather. So get out the holidays and they should make a lot of progress. So I'm planning on Monday. There will be traffic impacts on Commercial, especially northbound. Because they're working right there, the lane will be closed at times, especially north of Hospital Drive. When they're filling in those little areas, they're going to try and flag it so people can get around. But I would imagine the northbound lane of Commercial will be closed quite a bit. It's kind of like when AT&amp;T, you know, put their line in for this project. They close that whole northbound lane for a couple of months while they finish that project. So that's all I got.
Thanks, Chuck. Dr. Moss, you get that? You route the buses? All right. Next item on the agenda is number six. Alderman Atkins.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve Bill number three zero eight one dash twenty-five. Fiscal year twenty twenty-six operating budget for our second reading.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Mayor, I'll second.
Any discussion? Any questions? Clerk, please call roll.
Alderman Hartman?
Aye.
Alderman Kibelski?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Dana?
Aye.
Alderman Atkins?
Aye.
Alderman Stone?
Aye.
Six, zero.
Motion carries. Ms. Wagner, please read the bill.
An ordinance adopting the fiscal year twenty twenty-six annual operating budget for the city of Smithville, Missouri, and authorizing the expenditures for funds for municipal services.
Thank you. Next item is number seven. Alderman Atkins.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve Bill number three zero eight two dash twenty-five. Creation of a public safety sales tax fund for our second reading.
Can you do have a second?
Mayor, I'll second.
Any discussion or questions? Clerk, please call roll.
Alderman Stone?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Dana?
Aye.
Alderman Hartman?
Aye.
Alderman Atkins?
Aye.
Alderman Kibelski?
Aye.
Six, zero.
Motion carries. Ms. Wagner, please read the bill.
An ordinance creating a public safety sales tax fund.
Okay, next item is number eight. Alderman Atkins.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve Bill number three zero eight three dash twenty-five. Creation of shops at Smithville CID Fund for our second reading.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Mayor, I'll second.
Any discussion, questions? Clerk, please call roll.
Alderman Atkins?
Aye.
Alderman Hartman?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Stone?
Aye.
Alderman Kibelski?
Aye.
Alderman Dana?
Aye.
Six, zero.
Motion carries. Ms. Wagner, please read the bill.
An ordinance creating the Shops at Smithville CID Financial Fund to account for the establishment of a separate fund to allow for accounting of revenues and expenditures separate from any other monies.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is number nine. They did not have all the paperwork ready, so I need a motion to postpone this item. Alderman Atkins?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to postpone item number nine, Bill number three zero eight four dash twenty-five.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Mayor, I'll second.
Clerk, please call roll.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Atkins?
Aye.
Alderman Stone?
Aye.
Alderman Kibelski?
Aye.
Alderman Dana?
Aye.
Alderman Hartman?
Aye.
Six, zero.
Motion, motion to postpone carries. We'll get that on the agenda when it's ready, right, Jack? Next item on the agenda is number ten. Alderman Atkins.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve Bill number three zero eight five dash twenty-five. Annexation lots one and four, Phase One, Whispering Creek Farms for our first reading.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Mayor, I'll second.
Jack, do you have anything to present before we do public comment?
No, the public hearing was last week or two weeks ago, so all the information on that is submitted.
All right, first public comment is Nicole Pfaff. Been here before. Name, address for the record, please. And you have three minutes.
My name's Nicole Pfaff. I live at thirty-four oh five Northeast one hundred and forty-fourth Street in Clay County, unincorporated. And I just wanted to start, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak again. I don't know if I can add anything for the last three times that I've spoke about this, but I just want to let you know a little background that I moved out here to the country, I thought, three years ago. Left Kansas City, Missouri, a homes association. Platte County thought I would move out here for a quieter way of life, and I've been inundated with coming to Alderman meetings and county meetings and learning about utility easements and all kinds of things that I never thought I would learn about. Well, I'm becoming an expert. So I just wanted a few points that I think all of us have continued to bring up is the traffic that this development will bring to our area. A lot of people have been in favor of a stop sign of one hundred and forty-fourth and Mount Olivet where I live. I'm not really in favor of it because I don't want to hear cars stopping and starting or roundabouts, but I don't really know if there's a way around that. I'm also concerned with light pollution with the new development next to me. I don't really know what the development is. I don't know what the houses are. I don't know what the plans are. We really aren't clear on that. And I think this is going to be just the first part of more development. And it's just a concern for the quality of life that I signed up for now that I'm an empty nester and I just want to have some enjoyment in my life. So hopefully we can come to at least feel like that we're being heard and you guys care about our comments. And there's a little dialogue. I think it would go a long way. Thank you.
Thank you. Larry Yeatman?
Good evening. Larry Yeatman, forty fourteen Northeast one hundred and forty-fourth Street, Smithville, MO six four zero eight nine. How are you all doing? Including our new councilman, Alderman. Hey, I sent you all a letter with some attachments today, and I'm not going to beat the dead horse. Just really don't want a future road on my east boundary. And really, most of the people on one hundred and forty-fourth Street don't want that traffic that it would generate. Just prefer that road to go somewhere else, probably right straight onto Mount Olivet. But if any of you ever have any questions, you want to come view our properties around there, we could show you. And, you know, I said in that letter, there's no hiding whatever's going to go on there. It's in plain sight because it's all pasture, right? And I prize my pasture. I don't want to bury my property or pasture with a bunch of hedgerows to hide a bunch of traffic up and down beside me. And that traffic just would be right there, but it puts several of us on a corner lot. And that sliver is on his annex plan. I just kind of hope you kick that part of the annex out. But anyway, there's other issues. Call me anytime. Appreciate you listening, all right? Thank you.
Thank you. Cheryl Lee?
My name is Cheryl Lee. Forty-four hundred Northeast one hundred and forty-fourth Street, Smithville, Missouri, is my address. I stood before you, women and gentlemen, Aldermen, before you voted to annex Whispering Hill's first two lots and asked you not to approve annexation. You annexed them anyway. Two weeks ago, I presented to you statistics from the Missouri Highway Patrol, which verified the current unsafe conditions in the area of one hundred and forty-fourth Street, Mount Olivet, and Tillman Roads. And as was said then, with more population, more crashes will certainly occur. Tonight, I ask you again to deny annexation of Whispering Hills. If you do annex it, that tells me that safety is not important to you, only development. You cannot pass the buck on to planning and zoning. Clay County Planning and Zoning saw problems. Do you think that you would be different? I do understand why you would annex. More houses mean more money for the city of Smithville. But money to you does not make it safe for us in the area. Quite factually, there is nothing my husband nor I can do to affect the outcome in this particular case. We can only appeal to your reason to see why it is problematic. What we can do, however, is to take steps with our own fifty-eight acres to see that it has never developed. Until this experience, we were blind as to the outcomes, the problems that will happen upon our death. Now we are really aware of the impact. And we have taken legal steps to safeguard our property from development. I can assure you that our heirs are united in purpose to see that it never is. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Ballinger?
Hi, I'm Michael Ballinger. Address one four nine seven five Mount Olivet Road, Smithville, Missouri, six four zero eight nine. Thank you, Mayor and Alderman, for allowing me the time to speak with you today. Much appreciated. I already, I already stated a lot of my concerns at the previous meeting. But just, just kind of in summary, I had done some research as far as contiguous and compact and kind of a general consensus definition that I could find was a parcel of land is considered compact if it is spatially consolidated and in efficient shape. In contrast, a parcel of land that is long, skinny, or regularly shaped with many fingers or tendrils extending out would be considered not compact, or, you know, in this case, like sharp jagged edges. So I already kind of, I focused it in on my concerns about how lots one and four of Whispering Creek were connected in a very narrow path, a two hundred seventy-six, two hundred seventy-six foot path, but to the tract of land. Another thing I noticed, too, is on the northern edge of the tract of land, that it is very irregularly shaped with a lot of jagged edges. And every ordinance from other states or everything I looked at, like pretty much talked about having smooth edges on annexations, not jagged edges that are regularly shaped. So I was kind of wondering the reason for that and thinking, well, that should probably be smoothed out because that's going to be the new city border. And I would certainly hope this isn't the case, but like the only reason I could really think of for making those edges jagged is that would create a larger, a longer perimeter, allowing to annex more land on the next annexation and still satisfy the fifteen percent rule. So I'm hoping that's not the reason for that, and I'm wondering if some consideration should be given to, if it's deemed suitable for annexation, should it be redrawn with a smooth edge on the perimeter? So, and I had already talked last time about how as far as being contiguous and compacted, this property didn't really seem to be in line with the last three large annexations in the area. The other thing that I wanted to touch on, too, was the safety aspect that Mrs. Lee, I mentioned very eloquently, explained. And just, you know, I've already spoken with Mr. Hendricks and seems that there's an agreement. There definitely should be a traffic impact study if this annexation were to occur and the neighborhood development goes forward. And I just wanted to stress the importance of that, I believe. And I do have a lot of concerns with all the development in the area with Mount Olivet. I don't know how often maybe you drive that road, but like I already said, lots of blind turns, high, um, high traffic speed limit. And also, there's, there's no shoulders, too. One thing I remember, it was, I think it was from when there was a hearing for estates, Monterey Estates. The Monterey Estates, yeah, I think there was a sheriff deputy here who mentioned that, well, we don't really try to control traffic in that area or patrol it just because there's no shoulders. There's nowhere to set. There's nowhere to pull anybody over to. So I was just kind of wondering, maybe Mr. Hendricks could refresh my memory. Is this, I guess, like management of this stretch, is it going to be county or city responsibility now? And also, I was wondering if there's any plans as far as safety goes to kind of like monitor and control speed in that area because it seems like it's something that can't really be done, but it seems like something that's going to have to be considered with the large, large increase of traffic that's already going on and will be continuing on in that area. I think I'm probably pretty much up by three minutes. Thank you all again for the time to speak. Really appreciate it.
Thank you. Linda, anymore? Do you have anything to come in after? Okay. All right, turn over the board. Questions, discussion, comments?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. First of all, thank you for, for these folks of public testimony. It's important. We hear, we hear you. I've done a little bit of research from the last time because I'm sure many of you will, will, will remember the last annexation. Voluntary annexation is a, is a right of that property owner, providing they have the opportunity to meet the requirements. There isn't, I think it was mentioned that there isn't any plan yet because we haven't seen one, because one has to come before the other. And I struggle with this a bit because each one of you has property rights for your property specifically. If it's a lot, if it's an acre, it's land, and you have the opportunity to do what you want with it. And, and this particular applicant's coming before us and asking for voluntary annexation. And we certainly reserve the right as a board to say yea or nay. But in this particular case, it is his right. And I know it's not ideal for, to, to, to hear this, but I just want everybody to remember that there is a process and one has to come before the other. And I would hope that planning and zoning, if this is approved tonight, planning and zoning would do their due diligence, which I'm confident they would, and all the other requirements. And they have every right to ask for the things you're asking for. So that's all, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I would also like to tell everybody, thank you for coming forth and taking the time out of your night to speak on the topic that is brought to hand because it does make an impact and it does make a difference when I am sitting here and I'm hearing from your point of view because I don't live out there, so I don't really know. So I do appreciate that. I will also state, and I can kind of second what Dana said, just from being new, I have had lots of questions. I feel like I have had planning and zoning one-on-one. If there's anything before one-on-one, I'm getting like a little preemptive of that. And then also with the details of annexation, and I feel like I owe a huge thank you to Cynthia and Jack both for going over voluntary annexation. There are requirements. So I do understand and I do hear what everybody is saying, just as Dan is saying, excuse me. So I do just want to tell you, thank you again for taking your time and voicing your concerns because it does, it does make a difference.
Thank you. Anyone else? Can you get your mic broken there?
I got it. Again, thank you for everybody that has spoken. And I sat on planning and zoning. So what, you know, this is the annexation of the land itself. When we see a plat down the road, that's when a lot of the discussion will be had with what you have shared tonight. I just want to make that comment.
Thank you. Anyone else? Do appreciate Dr. Ballinger's comment. I do drive that right off, and my daughter's friend lives there. I do know the curves and everything that is on it, even in the winter and in the snow. So we're well aware. I do also want to remind property owners that when we do, if we do have a traffic study and things are required, we do come to you for easements. So remember that when you want to make roads safer, that might be giving up some land to make those roads safer. So it is not just a, we want this, but sometimes the county can't build it because they don't have easements. So remember that when we, if this does come forward. Because we do try to make our roads safer and last longer. I mean, we overlaid one hundred and forty-fourth right check with quite a bit to make, before we'd even annex it in. And the county is spread pretty thin, but our police department does patrol this area and our streets if these become our streets. So do keep that in mind. So with that, clerk, please call roll.
Alderman Dana?
No.
Alderman Hartman?
Aye.
Alderman Atkins?
Aye.
Alderman Stone?
Aye.
Alderman Kibelski?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Five, one.
Motion carries. Ms. Wagner, please read the bill.
An ordinance annexing certain adjacent territory into the city of Smithville.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is number eleven. Alderman Atkins.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve Bill number three zero eight six dash twenty-five, rezoning River Place for the first reading.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Mayor, I'll second.
We have fifteen public comments, so please bear with us. Dr. Moss, you're up first since I asked you to be here. There's a lot of discussion during planning and zoning on the school district's take on housing, so we're not going to comment for you, so the floor is yours, sir.
Yeah, absolutely. Mark Moss, one six seven three one, Riverview Road. Please know I'm not here to speak on behalf of, for development or against development or for annexation or against it. I'm simply here to represent and be on, and speak on behalf of the school district. And I just want to ensure the community as well as this board that if we have families that move into our school district or into Smithville, which Smithville is completely in our school district, we are here to serve and support those students that would enroll in our school, and we will do whatever is necessary to ensure that that occurs. So please know from a school district perspective, we love having students. We are actually one of the few school districts in the Northland that grew this year. We're proud of that. It's not significant. It's a little, little over one percent. But we are also having, since I got this role two years ago, we have continued to talk about what does the future look like? So that is a conversation that we're always having internally. It was actually a piece of our board retreat last Wednesday. So please know on behalf of the school, we are happy to serve whatever students come and will be, and can make adjustments to it. You guys have the big job of determining on development what that looks like or, or any of those future things. But on behalf of the, the school district, we are here to educate and want to assure you that we are ready to educate all students that live in our school district and would not ever want a narrative that is out there that says we are full or don't want more students. Our job is to serve the students that live in our district, and we're proud to do that. So thank you.
Thank you. Next up, ANDR.
ANDR, I am a former Alderman, and I live at twenty-six twenty-five Little Platt Road in Smithville, Missouri. I am very concerned about this new rezoning of this property that is in the floodplain. And I ask, respectfully ask, that you all remove it from the agenda. And we don't even take it there. And my reasons are simple. This is farmland. This farmland is in the floodplain. It is on a highway that has no shoulders. It is a road that is terrible, that has not been maintained. And it's going to create more issues on this intersection, not to mention when you're pulling out on KK onto 169, we are now backed up to the first curve. In the mornings, I encourage each of you aldermen to please go out and take a look at the traffic. This traffic is ridiculous in the morning. It takes me 15 minutes to get around the curve, just to get to 169 to pull out, to go to Kansas City for my job. I also want to talk about our farmers. Are any of you farmers? Presently, we are in harvest season, as if you may not already know, and the roads are very busy. They're bringing crops in at all hours of the day and night. And let's not forget about their equipment. We have combines, we have tractors, we have grain trailers, we have semis, and we have a lot of farmers joining together in our community to help in bringing the crops in. But can you imagine having a brand new home? And having to deal with excess dust, dirt, noise from the field next to your home? To some, it might be a nuisance, especially when you're putting children to bed at 7:30 at night and you've got the farmers out doing their job, which puts food on all of our tables. Keep this in mind, when these homes are built, because I'm sure you will, and you have disgruntled homeowners that are going to stand right here at this microphone, complaining to you about the noise issue of their neighborhood. Our farmers in our area are extremely busy every day of their life. And they work not jobs Monday through Friday from eight to five, like the majority of we do. They're in the fields early before most of us get up. And they're in the fields many times to late, late, early hours of the morning. Just recently, on F Highway, farmers were planting the crops after 10:30 at night. This board has passed a lot of zoning and the use of farmland for new subdivisions. And our community is booming. And I'm excited about growth.
That's time, thank you. We have 15 comments we need to keep to the schedule. Just to clarify for everyone in the room, this property is already zoned residential. It is not agriculture property, just for clarification, thank you. Next, Gary Huddlemire.
Hi, folks. My name is Gary Huddlemire, I live at 17700 H and H Lake Road. Area code 8167. Phone number?
We're good, you're good.
Yeah, can we proceed?
Yeah, go forward.
I know there are a lot of people here that's really concerned about the development on KK. And I understand that, um, you folks are waiting for a report on, um, on your traffic. And that's only one, I think, of, uh, several serious objections to, to this development. One, as I'm sure that you're very familiar with, um, one of the biggest problems that Smithville has is getting the traffic from the south end of town to the north end of town. And that again is going to be, uh, I'm sure in the traffic report. But this development also brings some serious concerns to all of the support systems that any community must have, and that is, uh, police, uh, fire, uh, school system. I spent, um, 30 years in a growing community southeast of, um, Kansas City called Hickman Mills. And we went through, when I first started teaching, we went through a growth period there in Hickman Mills. And it was not unusual for me to have 30, 35 students. With the economy the way it is today, um, we're going to have to have, of course, money to take care of, um, building schools. I can't see too many people in favor right now of voting for levies. That, that would be, uh, and, and of course, police and fire. Well, as I remember, their salaries are based on sometimes the, the vote. And so, uh, Smithville has some, I, I think, serious concerns about the, the developers that go out and buy, uh, large tracts of land and put, um, several hundred homes on, um, that land. And then we have to, um, ask for the people, the community, to support, uh, all of this development. When I moved here with my family in 2003, um, taxes on my three acres that was annexed into Kansas City or into Smithville, uh, was about $1,700. Now I'm over $4,000. For people who are on a fixed income, there comes a point in time when people who are on that fixed income can hardly afford to pay their taxes. So, um, I appreciate you giving me an opportunity to voice my opinion here about this development and I would urge you to deny it. Thank you.
Thank you. Randy Smith?
I'm Randy Smith, I live at 203 County Road KK Highway. And this is what I have, want to know about this property, approximately 107.5 plus or minus acres that has been zoned for R1P, which is R1B sizes since March of 2006, after being downgraded, as far as I'm concerned, from an A1 agricultural land. And it was agreed upon by developers, neighbors and other landowners in the immediate area, if it was, and it was passed by the board. In accordance with this solution, it was agreed upon by both parties that there would be no detrimental effects incurred by the homeowners or landowners in the adjoining areas. It is not going to drive down in any way prices of our, our lifelong largest investment. It brings to mind why wasn't anything ever attempted on this project at that time? Maybe it was a downturn in the housing market, maybe not. I don't believe anything was begun because developers could not put enough units in to significantly raise their bottom line. Now stated, the comprehensive plan formerly adopted as the policy of the city on November 17th, 2020, on the north part of the city was to remain single-family dwellings with increased densities when possible. So after having witnessed this ongoing scenario of almost 20 years from 2006, then changing it to 2020, we are now going down the same path again, by downgrading the zoning ordinance to once again allow even more units to be placed in the area at possible lesser values than previously it was slated, and we do not know the value anyway. This could all, this could include having rentals, because we don't know if this even includes fourplexes or even possibly low-income housing. The city now tells us that the invested interest will not be affected by this new community because of a sewer matrix that's going in to be implemented and ease the burden of the cost of taxpayers. If you think about this, this was not implanted, there'd be no cost, no, no cost to the taxpayers for the use of maintenance of said utilities, but moving on. It's also stated that if the plan approved, it will not be started for a year or two from now or even longer, or not at all. If this is the case in 10 years from now, or whenever will, it'd be back at this juncture with, again, with another proposal downgrading the zoning in this area. Maybe this will constitute zoning that will implement building of apartment buildings to the now set area. What strikes me as a blanket statement that this will not affect property values in this area is reads as whether a proposed amendment provides a disproportionately great loss to the libidious landlords nearly nearby to the public game. What is the public game? Who determines if this is justified? From my perspective, I would think anyone wanting to purchase my house or any other property in the area on the eastern, north side of KK would be willing to give a better market price for a proposed purchase with a view of a farm ground out of the front door. I definitely think that this would, we will not be inclined to purchase property of full value at the view of 166 houses, single-family dwellings or multifamily dwellings, let alone apartment buildings. If it comes to that point, more downgraded zoning meetings in the future out the front door. I'm not against the city growing, but I do think this venture has too many questions left up in the air for the sake of harmony and maximum benefits for all parties involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Danielle Alexander?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Danielle Alexander, I live at 3845 KK Highway. Um, I've lived here for eight years and I just have a few, um, points. I will stay within my three minutes. We moved to Smithville eight years ago. We live and moved here to live a quiet life, so we would be rural. I grew up in a rural community outside of Excelsior Springs. And I've seen growth happen and challenges that it imposes on similar communities that has happened in the past, such as Liberty and Kearney. And while I understand the desire to increase property values for our town and make us a better community overall, this development would increase the number of residents and traffic on KK. When you Google our town, one summary is this, and I love it. The city of Smithville is a quiet town of about 10,000 people. And that, that hits home, because that's the type of town I grew up in. Small, quiet, sense of community, not a huge city. This will no longer be the case at our rate of our current growth. During rush hour, leaving in and out of town, it is difficult to navigate and manage as commuters, as many of us already know. There is a large lack of resources and infrastructure there at the intersection of KK and Highway 169. I understand that previously there has been discussion of the MODOT report and runoff, so I will not spend too much time on that, just wondering when we will get those results in. An additional thing I have not seen, um, and maybe it's been published and I'm not aware of it, is the wildlife and environmental impact. Has there been any contact or communication, any studies from the Department of Natural Resources for any change in environmental, um, concerns with wildlife, increase in traffic? Um, the dwellings and the residential will push the wildlife out, which a lot of us moved out to that road, so we would have wildlife out our front door. Um, my concern is that will be gone going forward, once this starts. When you leave in the morning, as previously stated this evening, getting out to 169 to turn right to go south in the morning, it's 15, 20 minutes easy. I leave and I drive that road every morning, taking my son to school. I have easily sat there past the second, past that first corner for 20 minutes. My concern, and I know again, that's part of the MODOT thing we are waiting on, is just that traffic. Again, that bridge there, I don't know if you guys have ever drove down KK, but that bridge is a very, very tight bridge. And sometimes depending on the vehicle that you are passing, it's very difficult to pass somebody both directions on that bridge. Again, back to the schools as previously discussed as well. It took years and multiple votes and funding to get to the improvements where we are currently at and have been approved by the community. What will change with the influx of families in the subdivision, along with the additional dwellings throughout our community? We have concern over the farmland being bought and sold to create more subdivisions by real estate developers. A lot of us feel like our concerns are not being heard. And we are concerned that we will lose our small-town feel versus something that, in my opinion, as many others is what we are known for. In the community, we've seen several plans for new and additional residential dwellings here in downtown and throughout the rest of our town, 144th, down by McDonald's. My concern or question to that would be, I know we want to grow the town, but at what cost? We have all these different housing developments coming in. Is that just to grow our town? Or is this because we propose or see an influx in housing needs because of the Facebook, Meta, Google complex south of town? My concern is, is that if that is the only reason we are wanting to grow and add this many new subdivisions, that in 20 years, when Facebook and Meta, Google is gone, what will those houses become? Thank you for your time this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I ask you to?
In H script, uh, 17422 Thomas Lane Road. Fundamentally, the two things that come up is the developer has had this land for three years. If there is decisions to want to increase a thing, why did they not request the MODOT surgery, uh, study earlier? I think that's a fundamental reason why you do not have to mo, vote for the rezoning River Place tonight. As elected leaders, you want to gather all information appropriately so that your, your citizens feel that when you make the decision, you've had all the information. To vote yes without all the information is very similar to making a purchase without checking all the aspects of the product. I think based on that one thing, you can wait on rezoning this for a higher density. The fact that since 2006, it has been put as residential allows no reason to go forward with the vote tonight in a yea or a yes manner. When you take a look at the second major concern, it is that of safety. There are places that grow and sometimes they get notification or they get famous for the safety problem of that growth, not for the good family values or for the way that the community grew in a safe, family way. With 166 houses, you will have individuals that want to walk from that area along a street that does not have sidewalks, that does not have a place for people to walk or ride their bikes to get to the city of Smithville. So the options include, and I would put forth, do you have the state or the county widen KK? I, I am very ignorant of the processes of getting large road projects, so I will admit that. However, I am familiar with when you go into infrastructure projects in foreign countries such as India, any type of developer is requested to build out the four blocks around the building that they want when they want employment. So if we are going to rezone this for higher density, I think that can be asked that the developer puts in the infrastructure for safety, such as a sidewalk down that road, as well as a sidewalk going further down to Smithville. I don't think that that's unreasonable to ask of any developer. And in the end, they won't really pay for it, because we all know, when you take a look at developments like this, there is capital. And most of that capital either goes to revenue after expenses. Most often, it will get passed off to the, the, uh, end consumer. Rather than waiting for a problem to occur on safety and having the city to put in, let's say, extra funds to put in that sidewalk, I think that the thing that can be done is to say, can we ask the developer to put in safety infrastructure? In the end, the real goal is growth that brings in more people and allows those people to have a good life and bring into a community involvement. Growth that does not allow community involvement does not lead to a community that in 20, 30, 40 years is something that is, is sustainable or does well. I'm not against voting yes, but I don't think you need to do it tonight. I think you can wait for the full information and allow people to say, you know what? The city council waited for full information and then made the decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Debbie Gupta? Debbie?
Hello, um, same address, 17422 Thomas Lane Road. I am going to be brief because there's a lot of people here that are better prepared than I am, but I just wanted to, uh, stand in solidarity with them. And I feel like this is like a cold call, because I found out about this less than 24 hours ago and so did probably most of the people behind me. So I think that very fact that they're all here, we all live busy lives, we all have a ton of stuff going on and we canceled our night so we could come here because we care about this this much. So I don't know, I, um, I have tried to read a little bit and, and I don't want to steal your thunder, but my understanding is that Smithville has a fair amount of built, unoccupied new homes right now. So I'm a little confused, like, have we really looked at the numbers? And again, this is not my area, I, I look at cows all day. Um, but do we really need a lot more built? Um, if we already have, uh, some empty now? And then I do appreciate our school system. Both of my girls went through our school system and they have excellent careers. But that is key for a healthy community. The type of families you're going to attract want good schools. And you can attract other kinds of families that don't care. and you can attract other kinds of families that don't care about good schools if the schools can't keep up with the growth. And it was hard getting support for any school funding. I mean, you know, I've been here a while and I've tried to lobby for the things to increase the things for our kids through the school and it's been hard that those things don't pass easily. So if we bring in a lot more kids, are we going to be playing catch-up all the time? And how many kids are going to suffer from that catch-up before we ever would get there? And then, you know, floodplain is a real thing. You know, people can ignore it until it's a huge issue. So I definitely would think about that. And then I can definitely affirm the whole farmland thing. I mean, we were sitting out on our back deck this week and saw all this smoke arising from behind the house and I was like, is there a fire? And then I'm like, oh no, it's soybean harvest time and it's dry and that's just all the dust coming from the soil. I mean, it was impressive. It was impressive. So, and then I am not suave or politically correct or anything like that, but you know, is there secondary gain in this for certain individuals? Or are we making decisions based on the best interests of the entire community?
That's time. Thank you. Randa Blakeslee?
Good evening. I'm Randa Blakeslee, two zero one County Road KK, Smithville, Missouri, six four zero eight nine. In the Comprehensive Plan two thousand and thirty, there are several strategic pillars that are meant to guide the town through two thousand and thirty. Under diverse neighborhood options, one bullet is to preserve green space and rural feel. How does more concentrated housing accomplish preserving rural feel? The diverse housing is already being accomplished through the new apartments downtown and the duplexes south of town as well as north. Why are more multifamily complexes in an already rural area needed? In the fact-finding document, number one is the character of the neighborhood. I've lived in a multifamily home neighborhood where there are cars parked in every available part of the street. People live on top of one another with no privacy. I've also lived in a regular neighborhood. It's a completely different feel, much quieter and less claustrophobic. Adequacy of public utilities, having to construct a new sewer system first. Adequacy of public utilities. Could it be built today? No, therefore, public utilities are not adequate yet. Seven, the extent to which the zoning amendment may detrimentally affect nearby property. I've found several articles online that state that in the areas where single-family homes are the norm, a duplex might be seen as an unwelcome change, potentially lowering property values. In a rural area of town, townhomes are absolutely out of place. Another source said that a single-family home in a neighborhood that allows duplexes may experience less impact than a home in a strictly single-family zone where duplexes are out of place. This is currently a rural and single-family zone. Additionally, noise pollution can lower property values. That many families in one area will absolutely affect the noise for the surrounding houses. It will also greatly impact traffic, which I know has been brought up many times to this group, so I won't waste time there. Another pillar in the comprehensive plan is to apply design that fosters a small-town feel. With the development planned and progress right now, it's a total of one thousand four hundred more households. In a town of eight thousand, that's increasing our population by thirty-five to forty percent in a span of a few short years. How does this design foster a small-town feel? I don't know any small towns with this much multifamily housing. Additionally, the plan calls for intentionality for preserving rural areas. Which rural areas are being intentionally preserved to accomplish this plan? As of raising the fourth-generation warriors in my home right now, we're very proud of this town. We've been here a very long time. We live in the home that my grandparents built in the fifties and it's very important to me and it's a sense of pride for me. And I just would like to not lose what Smithville is and what makes it so important and so special by overdeveloping and losing that piece. If we could take that into consideration, that would be really important as well.
Thank you. Rachel Robinson?
Rachel Robinson, one seven three one six Thomas Lane Road. I watched the previous zoning meeting on video and you said in that meeting that the town wants progress, but I believe that the citizens want sustainable and deliberate progress. And additionally, only three hundred and sixty-one people took the survey for the Comprehensive Plan two thousand and thirty. Out of ten thousand nine hundred and seventy-one people, that's three point two percent of the population, which is not really statistically relevant for decisions of this magnitude. I realize this property is already zoned for development, but for the future and to retain a rural feel, we need to be intentional about preserving surrounding farmland. We might not be able to stop this development, but I implore you all to think critically about the cost of development of the farmland of this town. Without farms, we are no longer a small rural town. Not only that, but each town has the responsibility to preserve farmland that is feeding this country. When we make plans for development, what plans are in place to preserve the land? Farmland is being developed in this town at an alarming rate. In twenty, and in twenty nineteen, the American Farmland Trust released a report called Farms Under Threat. In it, they discovered that we are losing a hundred and seventy-five acres of farmland in this country every single hour. The CEO said some loss of farmland is inevitable, but that level is simply unsustainable. As population is growing, farms are shrinking. Who is ensuring we will keep enough farmland to sustain our population? No one. How is this happening? In a small-town halls all over the country are debating the things that we are talking about today and how much farmland has been lost in and around Smithville in the last five years. I've lived here my whole life. I went to college and come back. It's already dramatically changed and the rate of progress is accelerating. I'll end with this. In that same article referenced earlier, a farm family in Huntley, Illinois, named the Marshes, they said Huntley used to have a big sign saying, "A small town with country charm." Well, it's not small anymore and there's not a lot of country left behind. Ladies and gentlemen, if we continue down this path we're on, we'll be the next Huntley, Illinois. We cannot accept every development plan that comes across our desk. Where will it end? There will always be another development until this town gets swallowed up by Kansas City and we lose everything that makes us what we are. And what's the point of a comprehensive plan if we are not aligning with it by trying to stay with a small-town rural feel? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Danny Heath?
Hello, Danny Heath, four eight five, four eight five zero KK Highway. Sorry, this is the first I've heard of this meeting. I might be a little redundant on some of the safety things. It's not on purpose, but I've had them. So KK subdivision questions, some safety concerns, traffic data simulations for potential foreigner cars for at least two drivers per dwelling, additional cars during both rush hour in the morning and evening. Will there be a right turn lane added to turn right to KK? Off KK to one sixty-nine, will the left lane turn from one sixty-nine to KK be extended? The reason I say that, there's times that we were sometimes five deep right there and it's already impeding the northbound traffic of one sixty-nine, which is already near capacity. These kinds of changes need to be done, I think, in a proactive, safety-minded community versus trying to be a reactive one, which I think we've kind of spoke to previously by some other folks. I can't stress that enough. I know we want growth and I'm old school, I've been out there a long time. I don't necessarily want the growth, but I know it's coming. But I'd like for us to be proactive and have a plan before, you know, trying to react later to it because it'll affect all of us out there. The bridge is something I wanted to speak about, which I know a few people have already touched a little bit on, but will this be replaced? With all the dirt that was brought in to fill in the south side of KK, when we get out of this drought weather pattern, and I can speak of that, I'm a son of a farmer. We farm out there. It's been extremely dry the last five years. We get back to a normal weather pattern, that gets a lot of rain runoff down there. So I'd just like to make sure that we're aware, we can, you know, I've come across there multiple times with waters been over the road in the mornings and I'm just wanting to be conscious of maybe looking at that as something. I just don't want any oversight on some of that stuff. I know the roads you guys have probably talked about, but the bridge and that water coming in there, before they filled that in, it was all flat. Most people that can contest this that lived out there, yeah, it was flat and that's where the water went and it would go down. It's really going to back up and it will go over that, which we can do. I understand that. But where are we going to go? We're going to send all this traffic up H and H Road and around? That's not always a very conducive alternative route either, so I worry about that. And then the secondary place is, well, let's go down B Highway, but that's about a nine-mile radius. It's not quick. So when the river gets out there, it's going to be out on B and KK Highway and I live right up the road from it. So that's the other thing. Like, most subdivisions have two ways. Like, you got Cedar Lakes out there, you can go in town or you can go, you know, about to ninety-two. Most places have it as secondary, you know, so that's a concern of mine as well that I'd just like for you all to kind of be mindful of. And in my closing, to sum this up, the safest option would be for bigger lots that would require less houses but still bring the growth that you're looking to mirror, similar to like the Whiskey Ridge addition. That's what most of us residents envision our town growing as. So that's kind of my aspect of it. So thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Jeff Wilken?
Good evening. Jeff Wilken, two oh seven County Road KK. First and foremost, I'll be honest, I'm a builder. It's what I've done for most of my life. Built about five buildings that are now part of MCI. After leaving the airport, we went down to Texas with my wife and I and we lived in Houston, which was overpopulated and overcrowded and not in a very nice neighborhood. We ended up moving to Georgetown, Texas, where we were in a subdivision with about five feet in between our houses. So when I got the call to come back to the Kansas City area and build data centers, we took it and we decided that we didn't want to live down in Kansas City or Lenexa or Lowmoreland Park and be that close to people anymore. So we moved out to Harborview and we got a little rental there for the first couple of years and found that it was somewhat similar. There were still vehicle break-ins, there was vandalism in the neighborhood and it really kind of was a problem with us. And so when we found our house on KK Road and had enough money saved up, which isn't easy for everyone to do these days with the mortgage rates and taxes and all of that, we decided to take the opportunity and moved out to KK. Love it, but the last thing I really want to do is look out my exact driveway and see the turn-in to what would be ninety-plus duplexes. I don't think that there needs to be that size or quantity of overcrowding in the area. Like I said, leads to more crime. The traffic, everybody's already beaten that dead horse until it's rotted. The blind corner is an issue. Roads not maintained, snow removal, nightmare, especially with it being a state-owned highway. Like I said, there's not really large manufacturing or industry here either to support that level of housing. Those data centers, when they're complete, take about twenty-five to thirty people to run. So, once everybody moves out of here from building them, you're going to have a lot of houses on your hands if that's the way you decide to go. I'm not opposed to building. I just don't think we need to annex it into a duplex zone as well. I still like the farm ground. Looking out my window, I think they deserve a chance to have that road since they've been here a lot longer than these developers have. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Penny Huff?
I'm Penny Huff. I live at twenty-one twenty County Road KK. Been blessed to live there with my husband for twenty-three years. And just ask each one of you, when you sit on your back porch, do you say, "I love where I live"? I do. And we're not wealthy. We have a nice little house there in the country and honestly, I just found out about this meeting at nine o'clock last night. So I'm like, okay, I'm looking kind of toward retirement and now I'm starting to think differently about where I live. I was born here in Smithville. I'm a true Smithvillian. I was born in the hospital that used to be there. Dr. Vascova was my doctor, Paul Vascova, who served as our chief of police. My grandmother hand-built her house on KK and one sixty-nine. I don't remember the year, but that house was built by her. And I lived there, nineteen sixty-five, our home was flooded right there on one sixty-nine and KK. And my dad bought fifty acres and moved a mile up the road and I was raised in Smithville. I raised my children here and now my grandchildren. And I love that we live where there's farmers and I think pretty much anything I would have brought up has already been brought up. So I hope you listen attentively. This is our town, Smithville, and there's a lot of us, I look around, and people that I grew up with. And I get it, it's changing, but right there on KK, that spot, you're going to have to muddle through all that to get to any farmland. And my big concern is what are we doing to our farmers in this area? I just, I appreciate you listening to all of us. I hope you take it to heart. I hope you know that we love this town, we care about this town and the direction that we're headed. So I would ask you, what is your plan for our little town? I get it, we're growing and things are moving, but that's why people are here. That's why we live here, because we're getting away from the city and we're raising our children in our churches and our community and we're helping each other and we're working together. And I know some of that's just kind of old school, but it's good school and it's worth hanging on to. So I hope you think serious about what we're doing with that little piece of land there. Yes, it's going to be condensed and crowded and it's, I don't know, it just makes you feel sick. But anyway, thank you for what you do. Thank you for serving our community, all of you. Like I said, I haven't ever really been involved in politics or come to meetings or anything like that. I just live and work and enjoy this town, so let's take care of it.
Thank you. Joanne Meyer?
I'm just here because I just found out about the meeting today.
Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Joanne Meyer. I live at one seven zero nine five Smith Road, Smithville, Missouri, six four zero eight nine. And I just heard about this meeting and I was curious to see what was going on. I heard that there was going to be multifamily in the subdivision that's proposed and I'm concerned about, for one thing, KK is the last road to ever get snow service and that's concerning for all of those people that are going to be, you know, added to the population. So I didn't realize that I would be called upon to speak this evening, so I'm not prepared. But thank you for taking all of our concerns into consideration.
Thank you. Robert Parks?
Robert Parks with Wise Carkin Parks Engineers, one 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 North Main Independence. And we represent the developer and I'm just here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Taya? Make sure it's here somewhere.
Good evening. My name is Taya Gomez. I live at one eight zero
Good evening, my name is Taya Gomez, I live at one eight zero two zero Qianti Court. I'm here tonight to respectfully oppose the proposed rezoning and development near KK Highway, specifically the plan to build two hundred homes in a rural part of our community. This proposal, while perhaps well-intentioned, is simply not suited to this location. The roads surrounding the site KK and one sixty-nine highway are already narrow, poorly maintained, and lack adequate traffic control. KK Highway was never designed to handle the kind of volume this development would create. That's potentially four hundred more additional vehicles on these same roads every single day. The impact on safety, emergency access, and daily commute times would be immediate and deeply concerning. Beyond infrastructure, this development threatens something even more foundational, the rural character and open space that drew so many of us here in the first place. The land being considered for rezoning is currently farmland, and the neighbors and residents in this area do not want to see our remaining farmland paved over and replaced by dense housing. Farmland isn't just open space, it's part of our community's identity, our history, and our future. Once it's replaced by concrete and rooftops, it cannot be reclaimed. That loss is permanent, and it changes the landscape and spirit of our area in ways that we can't undo. We ask the board to consider that rural areas like ours deserve thoughtful, long-term planning, not rushed developmental, development that prioritizes volume over vision. Infrastructure has not kept pace with the current demand, let alone the kind of explosive growth this project would bring. I urge you to protect the character, safety, sustainability of our community by rejecting this rezoning request. Let's grow, but let's grow responsibly, not recklessly. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the last one, I'll turn it over to the board. Alderman Atkins.
Thank you, Mayor. Originally was set in two thousand and six, it looks like, uh, single-family housing was voted on and approved. Now why it wasn't developed, it's irrelevant, I guess. Like was said, there's some lot of good comments were said tonight, that's, that's very, very true, especially traffic. Unfortunately, that's nothing to do with the rezoning that we're looking at tonight, that is part of the development plan that will come down in the future, no matter what's being built there, and that's something that definitely needs to be looked at, and it's already being looked at by the state, I believe, and I myself feel there's enough multiple housing currently that'll last us for a little bit, and I myself like to see it stay as is. Thank you, Mayor.
Alderman Hartman.
Thank you, Mayor, and, and once again, thank you for taking your time out this evening, I know you're all busy with different events, so the, and I'm glad Mr. Parks is here, I will have a couple of questions for him, obviously, but from a development standpoint, any developer that comes to the city in this, and Jack can correct me if I'm wrong, traditionally is going to first look at how it's zoned, and that's what we're here tonight, correct, where we were currently at R one B, we're looking to change that zoning to, to density. And a lot of times, a developer will, will purchase the land, look at the zoning, but they'll begin the process of engineering, right? And that engineering covers everything from the, kind of the layout of the subdivision, the streets, the roads, the, the water, the sewer, what it's gonna take for connectivity, and that, that may include, I think, tonight it was brought up that concern about water flow and watershed issues, and that's typically addressed in the engineering. Those, those costs are always bared by the developer, and, and you would, you would think that that would be kind of the first thing that they would spend the money on, right, and that includes potentially a traffic study, in this case, I think they, they're looking at that as well. So, I, I don't know if the engineer, Mr. Parks, has kind of a, a, a thought, he doesn't have to answer, just kind of a thought on what type of engineering work has been done, what's gonna be prepared. And then, also, just for everybody's information, we do a very good job, I believe, at the city now, of making sure that once the engineering's in, they've met all the requirements, it goes through planning and zoning, you'll have the opportunity to have public hearing during that planning and zoning for the development of that subdivision. Ultimately, however they plan it, there will be sidewalks, whatever the traffic study says, we don't know, I, I have a pretty good guess what it's gonna say. That'll, that'll be included, and this will be, you know, then a decision that we, we, planning and zoning here is first, and if it's passed, then it comes to us as the alderman, and then we will, we will take that all into consideration, but there will be sidewalks, there will be likely improvements if they were to get that far, but Mr. Parks, just kind, if you're, if you're right with talking to us as a board, kind of what engineering's been done, what engineering needs to be done, before we even get to that process.
To date, there has been a traffic study, MODOT has it, MODOT controls KK, so they're pretty much gonna tell us what needs to be done, and what has to be done, and all that. A general layout, a preliminary plat, per se, has already been done, and that's the streets and utility layouts. Flood plane was brought up, we are not developing in the flood plane, that is all being left, all the residents and streets and development will be up and out of the flood plane. But, at this stage, that's kind of as far as we've gone, because it's a step-by-step process.
Okay. Go ahead, Tim. I, I will supplement, Bob has forgotten, they also have a stormwater study that was completed.
Correct. A preliminary stormwater study showing that we will have stormwater detention and management, so that what issues are out there are not gonna be made any worse.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Parks, for that, that's, I suspected that was the case, and I know that leaves a lot of extra questions for folks, I can see that in the audience. Again, tonight, we're just looking as a board before us to, to look at the density change. Jack, what is the zoning going from, it's going from R one B to what?
No, it's currently R one P, as in Paul, and that's, I plan, that the, we had an old system that allowed the preliminary plat that was approved to become the zone district, because we, at the time, with this happened, we had one hundred feet and seventy-five foot wide lots. And measured at the build line, so that's what was put in, it was R one B zoning for a hundred and sixty-six lots.
Okay, so the, we were going from R one P to R one B, correct?
No, the proposal before you is R one D as in dog.
Gotcha.
And some are two, so it would be a hundred and sixty-six lots, that's the proposed. But it's fifty of those would be duplexes, and the remaining hundred would be single-family detached.
Thank you for that clarification.
Excuse me, hundred and six, bad math.
An Alderman Hartman question for you, that people mentioned on housing, and I know you study this extensively. What's our current inventory look like in Smithville, and then what's our projection for the state and the metro?
Yeah, Mayor, so I did kind of look that up, currently, we have forty-six homes for sale in Smithville. I don't, I didn't get an exact number that are new homes, but I will, I will say that in, in the nation, we're, we're between four and five million homes short. And, there's a lot of discussion going on currently right now, obviously, among municipalities and counties, on how we can, we can help with that shortage. So, currently, like I said, forty-six, it looks like, homes for sale. The thirty-five percent of those are under five hundred thousand, the remaining are above. So there's, there's a good number that are over five hundred thousand to a million and a half. I, I, feels about a dozen, half a dozen to a dozen new homes. Primarily Greyhawk, Diamond Creek. But, there is a significant need for housing in, in all, all areas of the country, including ours.
Thank you. Sorry for putting you on the spot with that. Any other discussion?
I do just kind of, I have a little bit of discussion. I understand we need housing, I just don't know if this is the best location for duplexes. I understand the judicial hat, it meets all the criteria, I understand it, but again, I just, I don't know, I'm struggling with it.
Mayor, can I piggyback off of that? Okay, um, just trying to do our due diligence here. I think we could easily, yes, say it meets everything, but when we get to our next phase where development comes forth, I mean, we're gonna have some traffic issues, we already do, and I don't probably like any of the adjustments that will be made for that, with this dense of dwelling. I'd be more interested in seeing something bigger frontages, less numbers, but I mean, we could pass the rezoning and worry about it later, but I think we're, we're gonna run into more problems down the road with this one.
I agree. I think it needs to stay single-family, personally.
Most of it is single-family. I, I, and I understand, but in our comp plan, we talk about needing more diverse housing. This would accommodate that. Even the smaller, single-family detached, plus the duplexes. I, and I truly understand the traffic, and that'll come with the preliminary plat when that comes to us. Having said on planning and zoning, a lot of times when those preliminary plats come to us, we have discussion there too, on changing the density that they're looking at. So I'm just gonna leave it at that, as far as what else can still be done through planning and zoning, separate from just the rezoning of the property itself.
Thank you, anyone else? Clerk, please call roll.
Alderman Stone?
No.
Alderman Dana?
No.
Alderman Atkins?
No.
Alderman Hartman?
No.
Alderman Kabinsky?
No.
Alderman Wilson?
I was gonna be a yes. I'm a yes.
Five one.
Motion fails, next item on the agenda is number twelve, Alderman Atkins.
Thank you, Mayor, I move to approve Resolution fifteen twenty, amending the city's schedule of fees.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Mayor, I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor approving Resolution fifteen twenty, say aye.
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 All opposed, say no. Motion carries, next item is number thirteen, Alderman Atkins.
Thank you, Mayor, I move to approve Resolution fifteen twenty-one, amending the employee compensation plan.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Mayor, I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor approving Resolution fifteen twenty-one, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries, next item is number fourteen, Alderman Atkins.
Thank you, Mayor, I move to approve Resolution fifteen twenty-two, award bid number twenty-five dash fourteen, utility rate study.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Mayor, I'll second.
Any discussion or questions? All those in favor approving Resolution fifteen twenty-two, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries, next item is number fifteen, Alderman Atkins.
Thank you, Mayor, I move to approve Resolution fifteen twenty-three, award bid number twenty-five dash fifteen, solid waste for city facilities.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Mayor, I'll second.
Any discussion, questions? All those in favor approving Resolution fifteen twenty-three, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries, next item number sixteen, Alderman Atkins.
Thank you, Mayor, I move to approve Resolution fifteen twenty-four, commercial street sidewalk project takeover agreement.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Mayor, I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor approving Resolution fifteen twenty-four, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries, next item is number seventeen, Alderman Atkins.
Thank you, Mayor, I move to approve Resolution fifteen twenty-five, final plat of the Smithville marketplace.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Mayor, I'll second.
Any discussion or questions? All those in favor approving Resolution fifteen twenty-five, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries, any other public comment? Next item on the gender, agenda, I have appointments, on this one, Linda, do we need to do them individually, or just as a? All right, first one for Public Safety Sales Tax Review Committee, this is citizen-only committee to review the funds that come into the Public Safety Sales Tax, I think they're gonna meet quarterly, so we decided, or twice a year?
Twice a year.
Twice a year, to review those funds and expenses, and first one is Doug Sercioni, appoint Doug Sercioni to the Public Safety Tales, Sales Tax Review Committee, clerk, please call roll.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Atkins?
Aye.
Alderman Dana?
Aye.
Alderman Hartman?
Aye.
Alderman Stone?
Aye.
Alderman Kabinsky?
Aye.
Six zero.
All right, motion carries, Doug, you're good to go, I saw you back there, next, Richard Easley, appoint to the Public Safety Sales Tax Review Committee, clerk, please call roll.
Alderman Hartman?
Aye.
Alderman Stone?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Kabinsky?
Aye.
Alderman Atkins?
Aye.
Alderman Dana?
Aye.
Six zero.
All right. Next one, I appoint Harris Moore to the Public Safety Sales Tax Review Committee, clerk, please call roll.
Alderman Kabinsky?
Aye.
Alderman Atkins?
Aye.
Alderman Dana?
Aye.
Alderman Hartman?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Stone?
Aye.
Six zero.
All right, that one's all done, next, we move on to planning and zoning appointments, the first one is reappointment of John Chevler to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Clerk, please call roll.
Alderman Dana?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Stone?
Aye.
Alderman Kabinsky?
Aye.
Alderman Atkins?
Aye.
Alderman Hartman?
Aye.
Six zero.
All right, that, against this John, next one is Deb Dotson, I appoint Deb Dotson to the Planning and Zoning Commission, clerk, please call roll.
Alderman Stone?
Aye.
Alderman Kabinsky?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Hartman?
Aye.
Alderman Atkins?
Aye.
Alderman Dana?
Aye.
Six zero.
All right, Jack, you got a full Planning and Zoning Commission again. Next item, new business, any new business from the floor? All right, Dan, I think you're gonna wanna take this one, next is number twenty-two, adjournment to executive session.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn to executive session pursuant to section six one oh dot oh two one, three of the revised Missouri State statute.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Clerk, please call roll.
Alderman Hartman?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Dana?
Aye.
Alderman Stone?
Aye.
Alderman Kabinsky?
Aye.
Alderman Atkins?
Aye.
Six zero.
Stand adjourned, executive session, thank you.